Good evening, councilors. I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, May the 11th, 2020. We will begin the meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is everyone able to hear me? Am I? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to introduce Dr. Clyde Posley Jr., who will lead us tonight in prayer. And our city and our country has been faced with the trying 2020. While we have had many triumphs, I think we all admit that 2020 has been quite challenging for, and in some cases unprecedented. But tonight's prayer will be led by Dr. Clyde Posley Jr., who has been the senior pastor of Antioch Baptist Church in Indianapolis, Indiana for 21 years. He's known for using God's word to bring unity to diverse settings. Dr. Posley has initiated several ministries designed to sow unity among diverse cultures. The Kingdom Men of Excellence Men's Ministry and its work with socially distressed men throughout Central Indiana is one example. Dr. Posley is also an author, more than icons and images uncovering the hidden protest narrative of American black athletes in the 21st century. He has a PhD in interdisciplinary studies from Union Institute and University in Cincinnati. And he, 2015 dissertation was entitled "The Embodiment of Black Male Student Athlete", a case study of the 1968 metal stand protest. He also has awarded an honorary doctorate in the field of social justice from Habakkuk College Bible College. Dr. Posley is married to Dejana Posley and is the father of four highly talented young adult children. Dr. Posley.
Dr. Posley, you are muted right this second, and I would ask Serita if you unmute him. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So all can hear me at this point?
Yes, thank you.
Let me take this opportunity to thank Councilman Graves for the privilege of being with you all tonight to express prayer and talk to God on your behalf tonight. It is important there is not a body in our city that is doing more important work than what you all are doing to keep the spokes of our city moving with so many kaleidoscopic things occurring. So I applaud you. I also want to mention that as I pray, I will be including the families of some of the recent more polarizing deaths that have occurred in our city. I will not call out particular names because there are many deaths that are just as polarizing as other names are. But we do want to keep in mind that any death in our city of loved ones that may not be our own personal ones brings pain to a family. And as a unit, we have to absorb that pain together. So if you would, just take a moment and bow with me and we go to God in prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your goodness, your tender mercies and your kindness. We thank you for the privilege of access to intimacy with you. We recognize that as city leaders, as spiritual leaders, political leaders, social leaders, leaders among the human family, we cannot accomplish it without the great and powerful help that comes from you. We ask you today that you would take what some have called tragedy in our city, move it to where it is not such tragedy but more troublesome on its way to becoming some type of triumph for us. Triumph in the sense that we learn, we get better, we embrace and become more unified. My prayer tonight is that you would empower each council person on this board to let morality, ethics and morality reign in their critical thinking. I pray particularly for President Vipassali that you empower him to let that which is in his core guide how he correctly leads us into the unity that expresses diversity and pleases you. I trust you, God, that the work of this council is a blessing to the kingdom, strength for our city and pleasing in your sight. It is in the name of Jesus that I pray. And I thank you in advance for the results of this prayer. Amen. Thank you.
And I would ask Councilor Graves if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Graves. Thank you very much, Dr. Posley.
Thank you.
Our clerk will now conduct a voice roll call. The councilors, please signify by stating your name and answering present following the clerk's reading of your name so that we have a clear record of who is in attendance. Madam Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson is here. Present.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, present.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, present.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, present.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, present.
Counselor Carolina.
Counselor Carolina, present.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, present.
Counselor Evans, Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, present.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, present.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, present.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, present.
Counselor Holliday.
Counselor Holliday, present.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, present.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, present.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor President.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, present.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, present.
Counselor Mallory.
Counselor Mallory, president.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, present.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, present.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, present.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, present.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is 23.
23. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The senior quorum will proceed with official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified. The regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held electronically and in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, May 11, 2020, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings mean to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Dr. Posley, President. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinances, ordinance numbers 4 through 6, general ordinance numbers 4 through 11. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinance. Fiscal ordinance number 7, Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communication.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guest community partners who will provide us with COVID-19 updates. Unfortunately, just a moment ago, I did hear from Dr. Kane, who has been a regular presenter to the council, that because of some suppressing issues, she would not be able to join us this evening. So I will go to Ms. Ann Mertlow, who is president of United Way of Central Indiana. Ms. Mertlow, are you on the line with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, President Osley and councilors. Thank you for having me back tonight to brief you on our activities since I was last here on April 13. At that time, I mentioned that United Way of Central Indiana was pursuing a five-point strategy to deal with the economic effects of the COVID-19 crisis on our community. My update today will focus on our progress vis a vis that plan. The first three points on our strategy involve working with our community partners to, first, identify emerging critical needs; second, problem solve with and resource organizations to address those needs; and third, coordinate funding in a way to ensure that limited philanthropic funds supplement relief dollars provided by the government and avoid, to the greatest extent possible, duplicative efforts. To date, the Central Indiana COVID-19 Community Economic Relief Fund, or CSURF, has granted $11.8 million to 74 organizations since the fund was launched on March 13 to address critical needs, including food supply, childcare for first responders, safe shelter for the homeless, kids in the child welfare system and victims of domestic violence, mental health services, essential in-home care for the elderly and disabled, information and referral services, and services for underserved and isolated communities, including LGBTQ, refugees, immigrants and communities of color. Tomorrow, we will announce another significant round of grants focused on basic needs in Marion County, which are defined to include shelter, food, rental assistance, utility assistance, mortgage assistance, childcare, transportation and legal services specifically as they relate to eviction and unemployment insurance appeals. We will ensure that each of the councilors receive a copy of the press release with the details of those grants as soon as that announcement is made. We expect that to be midday. Beyond that, we do anticipate a fourth round of funding from CSURF. Of course, when the funds raised for CSURF, which amounts to about $23.4 million to date, are exhausted, United Way will continue its work serving the community through its basic needs, family opportunity and social innovation funds, which routinely do this work during the course of every year. I'd like to call your attention to two areas we are focusing significant effort on right now. Evictions in the face of growing unemployment and the need to reopen childcare to support a reopening of the economy. On the eviction issue, we're growing increasingly concerned about this issue. As unemployment grows, so does the risk of significant evictions and thus homelessness. The moratorium has clearly delayed evictions, but an enormous number of people are not paying their rent and will be faced with large payments and fees when the moratorium expires. We are working with other community and city leaders on these solutions and encourage the council to support the use of federal dollars to support rental assistance and legal assistance for related appeals. Finally, we continue to look forward to the reopening of the economy and focus on human services that will be required to support that eventuality, namely quality childcare, which is safe in the context of the challenges of COVID-19 and that inspires parents with the confidence to return to work at the appropriate time. This will take some finesse, given the costs of reopening and the uncertainty associated with the speed of reintegration of the workforce, the uncleanness of the reopening of schools and the like. And to that end, we are regularly convening over 160 childcare providers in Central Indiana to discuss their current state of readiness and the challenges associated with reopening. We're also working with FSSA to get the necessary guidance in place to ensure safe practices when reopening, not just for childcare centers but also for camps, which provide a significant number of childcare opportunities for summer activities and helping to develop plans that will allow for the appropriate scaling of open seats as demand grows. We're also working with our colleagues at United Way Worldwide to ensure that our federal legislators remain focused on funding for quality early childhood education as they consider further relief. As always, we remain deeply grateful for our partnership with the city on behalf of all of its citizens. Thank you for your time this evening, and that concludes my update. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mertlow. Appreciate your time this evening. Fellow councilors, are there questions for Ms. Mertlow? Ally Brown, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mertlow, I just want to thank you. The number one question I'm getting asked is about childcare and what's going to happen if there's no summer camps or summer schools or programs, and people are already getting nervous about what's going to happen at the end of July and August. So I just want to thank you very much for making that a priority. And if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know.
Well, thank you very much. I can tell you that the convenings that we're having with the childcare providers are proving pretty fruitful. The providers are ready to open. FSSA is on it. They have guidance in place already for the childcare providers that are internal childcare providers, if you will. The camp guidelines are almost ready, so they should be in place. The biggest challenge really will be figuring out what the demand is going to be. So as we look at what we're hearing from companies, it is truly unclear how quickly they're going to bring people back. And so one of the things we found as we tried to do childcare setups for first responders, we had the same issue, right? We just didn't know how many people were going to be bringing their kids in, how often they would show up. And so one of the problems we had was how do you fund childcares not knowing how many kids were going to show up? And would you bankrupt the childcares, having them stand there fully funded and empty before they could ever be sourced? So we were able to actually work with them and come up with a plan to start small and then scale them as we went. And that's what we're trying to put together now. So we're trying to do it with 160 providers. So it's a little bit complicated, but we're all working together on it. But we will certainly let you know if you can help in any way with that.
Thank you so much. I know there's a lot of parents who are looking for childcare and also looking for maybe a couple hours away from their kiddos. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Mallory. And then Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start by saying, Ms. Mertlow, I thank you for everything you're doing. I can imagine a lot of parents out there are very thankful and very ready to have you take over for the summer. I don't have any kids myself. I have nephews and nieces that are younger, and I could only imagine how hard it could be. I thank you for your work you're doing. But my question more so is, maybe not for you, maybe for, I guess, maybe for Dr. Virginia Kane or someone that may be able to answer a question for her. What are we looking at as far as opening back up our economy? I mean, I think a lot of businesses, I mean, I'm sure a lot of the childcare businesses are hurting because, you know, they are, I'm sure, day to day at this point. Are they going to stay in business or are they going to have, you know, close the books? What are we doing then to then ensure that a lot of these businesses, not only childcare but, you know, restaurants, mom and pop shops, what's going on to ensure these companies are going to get back into the swing of things when the rest of the state's starting up again and we are still a week or two out?
Well, I think Michael Huber can answer some of the supports that have been provided to the businesses. I can tell you that the PPP loans under the CARES Act have also been provided to many of the nonprofit organizations. So I know many of the human services organizations have taken advantage of the PPP loans and gotten those small business loans. So that has been very helpful to the nonprofit sector. I can also say that FSSA has been very good about providing support to high-quality childcare centers and been supporting those childcare centers as well. So many childcare centers have remained open through all of this and have been supported as well. So the childcare sector is in pretty good shape throughout this. It has been harder for the ones that are not early childcare centers. It has been harder for the ones that are dealing with the older children. And so, you know, I think it's going to be important to be providing them support as businesses start to reopen. And then I think when Marion County starts to reopen, is going to, you know, I think we're going to know more this week, right? But I also think that Marion County is in a little bit of a different situation because of our population density as well. I think we're going to know more about how businesses are going to do that because all of us were required to post our back-to-work plans today. So we all had to post that on our websites. So we'll get an idea of what businesses are going to be required to do in terms of how we're going to reintegrate. But again, I would defer to Michael Huber, who will have a better idea of this, and I believe he's speaking after me.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Mertlow. I cannot see everyone. Madam Clerk, can you see any additional hands? I do see Counselor Evans, and I know that he was next. I just want to make sure that if there are other questions that you can tee those up. Counselor Evans, Ethan Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Ms. Mertlow, for coming and offering your voice to this and for United Way and all the things you've done. I know you mentioned mental health services, and I am a big advocate for more funding and for more reaching out for that population here in Central Indiana especially. Could you go into a little more detail about what has been done with that as of recently in light of, you know, what's been happening with the pandemic and how some services may have been curtailed in other areas? What the funding for United Way and what services may have been extended through you guys through that?
So specifically in round two of the CSURF funding, we put some money into specific programs that were aimed at mental health. So some very big programs that deal with mental health. So the one that comes to mind was Families First is a very big program for mental health. And I can get the others to you. I don't have them off the top of my head right now, but three organizations that have very large mental health programs. The other things that are happening is that almost all of the organizations that are doing outreach to their clientele, which are just about all of the organizations now because they're not bringing clientele into their places of business anymore, are doing some sort of direct outreach by telephone or video, particularly to their elderly and disabled clients to keep in touch with them. Isolated clients in particular are particularly vulnerable in this timeframe. So not only because they may not have food or because they may not have prescriptions, but also because the social isolation will tend to lead to depression. And so many of them are not only doing that with their staff, but they have increased their volunteer programs and they're training volunteers. For example, Secoah Council on Aging is actually training volunteers to do remote visitation with the elderly around the city. And we're actually connecting volunteers through the United Way website to be trained and to do those types of volunteer activities. So that's an example of the kind of thing that's happening around the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there additional questions? Madam Clerk, do you see any additional questions?
I do not see any handbrakes.
All right. So, Ms. Mertlow, thank you for spending an evening with us and giving us an update on all of your amazing work, and we thank you for your dedication and the dedication of your staff.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite to speak with us Mike, Michael Huber, who is president of the Indy Chamber. Mr. Huber, will you join us?
Mr. President, this is Ian Niccolini. Michael just texted me that he's having some connectivity issues. But I can give a brief update if that's all right with you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. First, I just want to express our gratitude on behalf of the business community for this group's foresight in creating a mechanism to do paycheck protection loans. So in the less than two weeks since our application was opened, we have processed quite a few of those loans, and I can give you a quick rundown on that activity. We've had 320 requests to date. Now, many of those may have gotten financing elsewhere or through a bank, but that's the total number of inquiries in the 10 days since launching the application. We have closed and funded, or in the process of funding, 93 loans for a total of $2.1 million. That has been approved by the SBA. That is the guaranteed loan component of the Paycheck Protection Program. We have another half a million in loans that are in the process of closing. And what's been interesting and perhaps encouraging is that demand for these is manageable. And we're seeing this nationwide. Currently, the program from coast to coast has about $185 billion in loans approved to date, which is a little more than 50% of the total amount available. Nationwide, the average loan size is about 75,000. But here in Indianapolis, our partnership with you all, Bankable, has yielded an average loan size of about 21,000. So we're about a little less than a third of the overall national average for loans, and that says that we're reaching a lot of very small businesses. Want to talk a little bit about our lending outcomes. We have, to date, of those 93 loans that have been approved, 76% have gone to women and minority-owned businesses, 37% to African-American-owned businesses, 11% 37% to African-American-owned businesses, 11% to Hispanic businesses, 49% women-owned. And this is really a testament to a great partnership with all of you and so many of our other partners in the community in helping get word about this program out. We're reaching very small businesses, sole proprietors, and entrepreneurs who, I think in the first round, had fallen through the cracks. We all saw the implications of that. And so my, my pitch tonight would be, though, that we still have capacity. The portal is still open. And we're encouraging entrepreneurs to, you know, read up on the program. And if it's something that makes sense for your business, don't select yourself out. We've got the application on there. The calculator is on there to give you a sense of loan eligibility. And we are here to help. We've got a team of folks ready to do that. But a very successful program to date. We are managing demand. We have capacity. We would like to hear from more entrepreneurs so we can continue to make these forgivable federal loans available.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Nicolini. And I understand now from Mr. Huber that he is back up and running. So, Mr. Huber?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Yeah. And thank you to Ian. My network wasn't working at the worst possible time. I, I'm not going to repeat Ian's update about the loan program except just to express my gratitude. The, the meeting that you all called on short notice a few weeks ago has helped us direct loan capital to many small businesses that would, would have a difficult time accessing it previously. And what we are learning by connecting with so many businesses will serve us well in the recovery. So, you know, as Ian and I have said before, our organization has for several years made small business loans. This, we're, we're doing it as a result of this crisis and as a result of your support and your trust at a level and a volume that we never have before. So it's allowing us to make connections with many small businesses. We're doing everything we can to get through this time. I do want to bring up two other quick updates, though. Number two, in addition to small business lending, and Ian said, we still have capacity. So you can still send them our way at least as long as this round of PPP is alive. We're getting as many Indianapolis small businesses access that program. Number two, we did launch a portal. It's an, you can think of it as an intake function called Rapid Response Talent that you can find at the same site, response.ind Chamber dot com. We have a growing number of businesses who are hiring people, which I know in this crisis, we are, we're all concerned, as we should be, and you as an elected body, with all of the people who are struggling and who, who have been laid off or furloughed, you know, as you should be. But there are a number of industries that are hiring as a result of the crisis. Companies that are trying to service the need created by COVID-19. Logistics industry is still in, in high, high demand. So you can send them to our site. We take them through a form. It takes about five minutes. This site was created in partnership with Employee Indy, with whom you're well familiar, SN. And so it's a, it's a big collaboration, working on many partners. And it's, it's really an intake form, but it's designed to help that, you know, may perhaps furloughed, perhaps a person who's been laid off, who's looking for a job opportunity, connect with resources very, very fast. You can find it at response.ind Chamber dot com. And then third, just looking ahead, we are doing a lot of programming. We do at least three virtual town halls a week. And a lot of those town halls are very hands-on where we've got some expert from the business community helping particularly small businesses get prepared when the economy does reopen, that they'll be prepared, they'll understand the health regs, they'll be prepared to help inspire confidence in their clientele that they are observing safe practices as we all try to stop the spread of COVID-19. So we are at your service in that respect. But I, I do want to echo Ian's comments in expressing my gratitude for you and giving us this trust to try to reach many, many, many small businesses very fast. And we can still take your referrals if you know of small businesses that need PPP in order to get through this very challenging time. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions from members of the council? Counselor Maury?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question right now is, I think I've had a conversation with Ian and Jeff from the chamber. I'm questioning, where are we tracking these mom and pop businesses that are being so negatively affected by this COVID outbreak? This is something we could not predict, we couldn't forecast. But what are we doing to, for, you know, keep track of less than 100 employees to see what's happening to them in this whole COVID outbreak? Because I think we've seen a lot of businesses in the last week close. I think in Broad River alone, we've seen roughly maybe 10. It's not my district, but I, I've, I've heard the stories. As it does not overstep my bounds, and I apologize if I have, but I've heard, you know, the stories of those businesses closing. Furthermore, you've mentioned logistics as an industry that is hiring. I personally, I, I work in logistics. But there's also been some scrutiny towards logistics and third-party logistic firms from transportation providers. You know, what is, what are we doing to kind of, you know, combat that narrative and make it seem like it is? Because I, I personally don't think that the logistics companies are the devil here. I think that they are helping move the economy forward and we are helping, you know, you know, grocery stores products on the shelves. So what are we doing to A, track these mom and pop businesses that are 100 people and less that are going out of business, that are essentially shutting down from Marion County, continuing a stay-at-home order and shutting down business in the economy? And B, you know, what are we doing to assure that, you know, these logistics companies that are out there in Marion County, which there are many, aren't falling under the scrutiny of the negative, the negative appearance of, you know, the third-party logistics devil of transportation?
So thanks, Counselor Maury, for the question. First of all, we're able to track a lot of the requests that we've received for our Rapid Response Hub. That was the first step was putting the site together and the service that answered questions. We started that back on March 16th. And while we protect the, we, we don't release a company's information unless they give us their permission. We do track them by category. The most common questions and loan requests are pretty much like you'd expect. Lot of restaurants, lot of retail, a lot of services businesses, both business services and personal services that were hit very hard. One of the, and, and we could, we could produce a follow-up report for the council in terms of who has made, what types of businesses have made inquiries and what the nature of those inquiries have been. One of them that is, was definitely top five was real estate and construction that were impacted. So while that, that, while Counselor Maury, that wouldn't tell us what, you know, every business or even a majority of businesses are going through in Marion County. I think it's a pretty good cross-section and we could report it back. Your second question about logistics, I totally agree with you. Logistics in many, many logistics companies are hiring. Many e-commerce companies, we have a lot of e-commerce here in central Indiana. It's sort of at that, the intersection between our tech sector and, you know, FedEx and the whole, the entire supply chain of FedEx. You have a lot of those companies that are hiring. A lot of healthcare companies and including the suppliers of Eli Lilly and Roche and other companies that are active in producing equipment and testing as a result for COVID-19 are, are hiring. And I agree with you. I hate it when, when I see logistics companies get a bad name because it's a very important sector for Indianapolis. In fact, Indianapolis actually stands to do better than many other cities our size because of the massive presence of FedEx and all the traffic that they are still doing at a time when commercial passenger aviation is down. So that's just to say, we, we didn't, we're not part of a marketing campaign at this time that maybe is focused on logistics just yet. But I agree with you, and I think we need to do a better job of telling the story that that is one sector that has many companies that are hiring. Sorry, go ahead. So, so those, those are, that's my best attempt to kind of answer your two questions. I think on the first question, we could, we can get back to the council with some reporting about, we basically have, you know, two months of data of businesses that have been coming to us, you know, expressing their challenges, asking for support. The two most types, two most common types of questions that we get are requests for loan capital, which we've tried to address with your help, and then HR-related questions. How can I, what if I need to take my employees down to part-time? Or how do I protect my employees' rights if I need to furlough them for a while or things like that? But we could follow up with more detailed data. Thank you for the question.
Excellent. Actually, I, I need to move Counselor Maury.
Go quick, I'm in. Just, just ending remarks. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Well, then,
Counselor,
Make it fast.
I, I don't mean to interrupt on your district. I know Broad River Falls in your district. I, I don't mean to interrupt. But I, I just, I, I have, I have family that has a restaurant in Speedway area. And they, they were mentioning other restaurants that are closing in the Broad River area, which is a, you know, historically pretty, you know, well-to-do area. They're, they're concerned about. So that's the only reason I, I use that reference. So I, I just want to make that clear. I, I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. But I, I do, Michael, I thank you for your explanation. I hope we can really hone in on these mom and pop shops that are going out of business and, you know, keep track of those too, because it's more than just the 100-plus people businesses that are going out of business. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Counselor Jackson had a comment.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Quick question. So I know when originally, we originally approved this proposal, there was some problems with the portal or the initial approval hadn't been open yet. So you hadn't opened the portal. And I've tried to walk through the portal with some people I refer, businesses I refer myself. And they asked when you referred to use my name so you guys would know where some of these referrals were coming from. Use Counselor Jackson. Have you received any other referrals from me that shows that they're coming through from any other businesses? Minority businesses I refer specifically?
Counselor Jackson, thank you. I appreciate it. I, I'll have to take a look. Our, we've gotten quite a bit of loan intake. We'll, we'll take a look and see if we have any with, with specific referral sources on it. I, I will say, though, that if, if you are interested and want to start the application process, it is at response.ind Chamber dot com forward slash loans. And then to your first question on the, the portal. So we're, we're actually working in a partnership with another community development financial institution called Bankable. So we've, we've been able to, we've been able to get loans approved with, with other, with other banks around the country. So no issues there. However, if you do have a constituent who has any challenges with the application or any questions, contact information is on that website as well. We'll, we can follow up with applicants. Again, we have some capacity, so we want to make sure that we're being a resource for, for folks you all send our way.
That's, that's very good. Can you have that email to Madam Clerk Sarita so she can send that web link out, the website? The challenge is your website at the time was not updated and it was very confusing. It was taken them to the rapid loan. They didn't know to fill that out. They didn't know PPP. They didn't know what process to start first is what the challenge was. So if you could do that link to Sarita and then we get requests as counselors, we can forward that to them. And it's good to know that you got other partners, financial institution partners around the country to help them get more approval here so that we know that our constituents are being serviced. Because that was my problem. I know Counselor Monroe Gray were sending people too. We kept wondering, are our constituents being serviced? So thank you for that. And yeah, I would like to know if you could send me an email or any of my constituents coming through there with, on the application. I want to know that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments for Mr. Huber or Mr. Nicolini? Madam Clerk, do you see any? All right. Mr. Nicolini, Mr. Huber, thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for the work that you've been doing to, in our community or our businesses, trying to keep them afloat. And in turn, keeping, keeping them employing others. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night and all the best tomorrow. All right, counselors. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And I believe that Counselor Adamson had a motion to be made.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we amend the agenda to advance proposal number 160, 2020 to special orders, final adoption of proposals for action this evening. There are time, timing issues regarding this proposal that require passes before the next council meeting.
Right, there's been a motion. Who was that second?
Counsel Jackson.
All right, very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you, fellow counselors. The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for April 13th and the 24th, 2020. Do I have consent?
Consent.
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 Very good. Thank you. So we'll proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And because we don't know how long we'll be in this, in this condition where we're talking to each other and meeting with each other electronically, we're going to start trying to get back to business. And we're going to have a special resolution online. How about that? It'll be a first. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number 157, which recognizes the academic achievement of the best and brightest scholars in the Marion County High Schools. And that would be Counselor Hart. Counselor Hart?
Mr. President, I think Minority Leader Maury has his hand up.
Okay.
Just real quick, Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Our caucus would like to get behind this as well. We thought we had already squared that away that we were supportive of his proposal. So if we could have the, the agenda reflect that we are in support, the Republican Caucus, and anybody else that wants to join, obviously, please say so. Thank you.
Mr. President?
I think we have a number of individuals who are joining in on this. Madam Leader, please.
Please add the Democrat Caucus to the special resolution as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Counselor Hart?
Certainly. You want me to go ahead and read it right now?
Please.
To validate? Okay, just making sure because we're in a very strange scenario. All right, so a special resolution recognizing the academic achievement of the best and brightest scholars in the Marion County High Schools, whereas Marion County is home to 22 private and 43 public high schools. And whereas these schools account for over 50,000 students in Marion County alone. And whereas Marion County has the highest student-teacher ratio of any county in the state and nearly 24 students per teacher. And whereas the day is for the county to recognize the achievement of the diverse group of 65 students who honor their hard work, determination, and perseverance. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the city's highest scholastic achievers. Section two, the council invites all valedictorians and several of the respective family members, friends, guardians, or guests to attend the full council meeting scheduled for the second Monday of July, wherein the counselors will publicly recognize and congratulate the valedictorians and wish them continued success in all future endeavors. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption of compliance of IC 36-3-4-14. I hereby move.
Is there a second?
Second.
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 The motions have been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Back to the speaker, Counselor Hart.
All right, well, I appreciate everybody extremely with so much gratitude. There was a little bit of confusion going on at the beginning with, you know, a little bit of a learning curve, but ultimately, the idea is to, you know, show so much respect and time, for the time that individuals put into their, their academics. I mean, to become a valedictorian is a lot of work, and I believe that we have a lot of great minds in the city, and I just want to show recognition to them. And I appreciate everybody banding together and, and being a part of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Hart. The next item on our agenda, proposal number 144, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't seem to have the minutes here yet. This is, I think it's just introduction proposals, sir.
Well, you might have a point there, actually.
But you startled me enough that now I'm going to go back to being muted.
All right, very good. It appears that my notes are potentially off here. And, well, thank you very much for pointing that out, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Counselor Johnson. All right. Then let us go to introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 144, introduced by Counselor Johnson, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, approves an additional appropriation totaling $500,000 in the 2020 budget of Office of Corporation Counsel Consolidated County General Fund in Character III for the purpose of litigation that arose after the passage of the 2020 budget, Proposal number 145, introduced by Counselor Lewis, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves additional appropriations totaling $8,626,074 in the 2020 budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development Federal Grants Fund in Character III. Additional appropriations are supported through the award of federal funds by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, for the ongoing prevention in response to the coronavirus pandemic. Proposal numbers 146 through 156 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 146, introduced by Counselor Johnson, establishes the interest in purchasing specific land in 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by J.L. Fox for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number 147, introduced by Counselor Johnson, establishes interest in purchasing specified land, my apologies, the specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by C. Peters for the construction of public works, of a public works project. Proposal number 148, introduced by Counselor Johnson, establishes the interest in purchasing specific land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by Peters Property Management for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number 149, introduced by Counselor Johnson, establishes the interest in purchasing specific land, specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by K. Stroop for construction of a public works project. Proposal number 150, introduced by Counselor Johnson, establishes the interest in purchasing specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by T. Wildsworth for the construction of a public works project, excuse me. Proposal number 151, introduced by Counselor Potts, authorizes restricted parking along the south side of 56th Street west of Meridian Street in District 2. Proposal number 152, introduced by Counselor Evans, removes parking restrictions on Chelsea Road between Lynn Hurst Drive and Dunlap Avenue in District 2. Proposal number 153, introduced by Counselor Holliday, authorizes intersection controls at Callum and Rana Drive in District 20. Proposal number 154, introduced by Counselors Gray and Osalee, authorizes intersection controls at 30th Street and Tyrone Drive in Districts 8 and 11. Proposal number 155, introduced by Counselor Barth, authorizes parking restrictions on Claridown Road from 42nd to 44th Streets in District 7. Proposal number 156, introduced by Counselor Boots, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Steinmeier, Lynn, Lynn Mora and Highgate subdivisions in District 3. Proposal number 159, introduced by Counselor Osalee, refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, renews the Marion County Public Health Department's safety, safe syringe access and support program by adopting the declaration of the Director of the Marion County Public Health Department and approving the safe syringe access and support program. Proposal number 160, introduced by Counselor Osalee, refer to Committee of the Hall, consents to the extension of the mayor's renewed declaration of local disaster emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Counselor Johnson, for being ready to jump onto a proposal that has not yet been introduced.
Mr. President, should I make that motion?
The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business. Proposal number 158 is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on April the 22nd. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Madam Clerk, can you, can you see everyone?
I don't see any hands.
All right, very good. Seeing none, the proposal will pass into law. There is no business under special orders public hearing, and there is no business under special orders unfinished business. So the next item on our agenda is special orders final adoption. And with consent of the body, I would like to move proposal number 160, which was previously motioned to be added for action this evening, to the first item of business under special orders final adoption. Do I have consent?
Consent, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, then, is proposal number 160, which consents to the extension of the mayor's renewed declaration of local disaster emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion?
Some moved, Mr. President.
All right, very good. Thank you. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Madam Clerk, can you see all of the screens?
I do. I do not see any hands.
All right, very good. If there are no comments then from counselors, we'll proceed to a roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots. Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray. Gray. Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Counselor Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Counselor Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye, as long as we can get our economy back open soon.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is 24.
All right, the motion carries 24 to 0. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 88, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Madam Leader, Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 88 approves a statement of benefit of Apex Benefit Group, Inc. and JFG Real Estate LLC as an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Ryan Hunt of the Department of Metropolitan Development and Leslie Wagner, senior principal, gave a brief presentation making the following key points. The company desires to purchase and renovate an outdated office building near Interstate 465 and Keystone Avenue. The cost of the building will be roughly $3.5 million. The cost of total rehab of the building will be $2.34 million, 55 employees with an average wage of $43 per hour, a request of a seven-year real property tax abatement. After much conversation and questioning, the proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 13 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motions have been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, very good. Seeing none, we will now proceed to a roll call for our vote.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Counselor Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is 24.
Thank you. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 124, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 124 approves a statement of benefit of Union at 16th LP, an abatement for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Representatives from the NX Group and TH Investment gave a brief presentation making the following key statements. This is a proposed affordable housing development with an in-house general contracting firm with a proposed investment of $15 million. Ms. Hagaman stated that there will be a 30-year affordability commitment, and the tax abatement is roughly 4%. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 13 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, the motion has been moved. Is there, is there a second?
Second, McCormick.
All right, the motions have been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, very good. Seeing none, we will now proceed to a roll call for our vote.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray. Counselor Gray.
He's muted. Can you unmute him?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Holliday, aye, thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Counselor Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 125, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take the next 10 proposals together, 125 through 135.
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 125 authorizes parking restrictions on Pennsylvania Street from 16th to 25th Street in District 11. Thank you. Proposal number one twenty-five authorizes parking restrictions on Pennsylvania Street from Sixteenth to Twenty-Fifth Street in District eleven. Proposal number one twenty-six authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Thompson Meadows subdivision in District twenty. Proposal number one twenty-seven authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Spring Valley subdivision in District twenty-two. Proposal number one twenty-eight authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Stonebrier subdivision in District twenty-five. Proposal number one twenty-nine authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Brookwood subdivision in District seventeen. Proposal number one thirty-one authorizes intersection controls at Kennington and Iowa Streets in District sixteen. Proposal number one thirty-two authorizes a speed limit reduction, sorry, I lost my screen there, speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Cherry Lake subdivision in District fourteen. Proposal number one thirty-three authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Orchard View and Rakewood subdivisions in District twenty-three. Proposal number one thirty-four authorizes intersection controls at Capitol Avenue and Midland Road in District twenty-three. Proposal number one thirty-five authorizes intersection controls at Fifty-Second Street and Alameda Road in District eight. It was moved and seconded to send proposal numbers one twenty-five through one thirty-five to the full council with a due pass recommendation and that motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero and I so move.
Second.
Oliver.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Madam Clerk, do you see any hands?
I do not.
Very good. Then we will proceed to a roll call for the vote.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Evans, Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Holliday, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Counselor Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one forty-two referred to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one forty-two authorizes Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, to carry out a public transportation project in accordance with Indiana Code eight twenty-five and Indiana Code thirty-six-nine-four and amends the code to make various changes to chapters four forty-one and six twenty-one regarding traffic and parking as part of the Purple Line Rapid Transit Project, one key component of the Marion County Transit Plan. The motion to amend was made and that motion was carried by a vote of ten to zero to one with Counselor Carlino being the abstention. Counselor Gray asked when the starting date and the end date is for the projected Purple Line and they stated, Indigo stated that that construction will begin in early two thousand twenty-one and go through two thousand twenty-three and the service will begin in two thousand twenty-three. Counselor McCormick moved seconded by Counselor Boots to send proposal one forty-two to the full council that do pass as amended recommendation and that motion carried by a vote of seven to four to one with Counselors Anay, Dilk, Hart, and Maury casting the negative votes and Counselor Carlino abstaining and I so move.
Second. Alright, the motions improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it is, I think it is very much so a point to make, the amount of money that the citizens of Marion County have shelled out to this project. Indigo has put up roughly forty thousand dollars towards this project. We have put up a hundred and seventy-some odd million. Moving forward with this current rapid transit line that we have now, I think is a bit impulsive. I think we need to consider what we're doing here and really look at the red line and see what is happening with that red line first. And consider the successes and the downfalls of what has been the red line. I think that we will see that we have, you know, not been as successful as hoped. And not only that, I think we've seen Indigo mention that we have had, they have put a pause on their projects thus far for the rest of the year with COVID nineteen going on. So I think that this proposal is one that we don't necessarily need to be jumping in on if Indigo isn't even going in on what they're saying they want to do. So what is, why are we preemptively doing something for them when they don't know for sure they're going for what they're doing?
Very good. Additional comments? Counselor Ethan Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do agree with Counselor Maury that we do need to learn from what has been happening with the red line. However, I disagree that, you know, we have to delay in some way because it already has been delayed from what would have been construction starting this year because of the pandemic response. And, you know, because of the size of our city and that we are in the top fifteen largest cities in the country, it is, you know, almost a certainty and expected that we should have some form of mass transportation for our citizens. That it should be expected that, you know, a good one-third of our people do not have cars as a form of transportation in the city and we can't just have them walking to and from like miles and miles from their homes to work. And, you know, we should be providing them a form of reliable transportation. And I see this as a way of providing a faster, a more efficient transportation on the side of town that has not had that in years past, which would provide more stops. And yes, a more effective form would be rapid rail transit. But the state has preempted that for the past few decades with their own law that prevents cities from putting in rail transit services. So this'd be the next best thing in my opinion.
Very good. Counselor Hart and then Counselor Graves. Counselor Hart? Question for the clerk. I, I had a constituent write me and ask me if they could show up to this meeting tonight and obviously we, they can't do that because it's virtual. So I directed her to the portal online and she wrote many paragraphs of her personal thoughts on the measure. Are those going to be read here this evening or how are the words from the people in the city actually presented tonight or in general to this proposal? Because I just don't want her words to go, to get lost. I'm sure that we can send them out to fellow councilors, but because it's not public hearing, she wouldn't have been heard this evening anyway. Okay, alright, so that was one portion. The other portion that I just wanted to make was to address the councilors in the room. And, you know, I did hear this in committee and there was a few things that really stood out to me. Primarily, if you read through this proposal, I'll talk real slow to give you a lot of time to do it while I'm talking. You'll notice that there are a lot of left and right turns being prohibited on the Thirty-Eighth Street. And my worry is that it's going to really interfere with the traffic on Thirty-Eighth Street, especially during the really busy times. So Thirty-Eighth Street isn't just an area that's for residential traffic. There's a lot of visitors that come into that part of town that are really going to be disturbed by not only how they can turn left and how they can turn right on what adjacent streets, but also the impact of dedicated lanes. So what you'll see in this is there is a lot of strange traffic patterns, to say the, to say the least, that is really going to make it difficult for individuals visiting this city that could potentially cause a lot of traffic harm. And, and my fear is that, you know, we're, we're not learning from the red line. And to even quote Hogsitt and some of the debates that he was doing over the campaign season is, you know, in his own words, he said he wanted to, you know, look at what we did on the red line and readdress it and, and improve on that. So I'm not saying, you know, that to shut all it down, it's not going to work and, and not move forward with it. I'm just saying, let's move forward in an appropriate manner that makes sense. There's more cars and, and people who are going to use their personal motor vehicles on Thirty-Eighth Street. Why are we going to restrict the lanes down to one lane in each direction? And that's what this proposal is giving you the power to do or give Indigo the power to do it. I just think it's a bit drastic and, and not realistic in terms of the amount of traffic on that city. So that's my comment. My question, if there's anybody on this call listening from Indigo, from the last time in committee till now, I'm really curious if there's any correlation between dedicated lanes and the amount of federal funding for this project. Alright, very good. Thank you. I don't know if Scott Hall might be able to answer that question if he's on, if he's online right now. CFO Hall, are you available? Or is there someone from the administration who might be able to answer that more clearly? I think I see Inez on the call. She'd be interested in answering that. I'm sorry. Repeat that, Counselor Hart? I see Inez Evans on the call. Not sure if she'd be interested in answering that.
I'm trying to unmute. Can you hear me?
Alright, very good. Thank you. Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Yes, there is a direct correlation. Thank you for the question. There is a direct correlation. The federal government has allocated seventy-seven point five million dollars as we've indicated before. Their contribution is predicated against the categories of meeting the BRT standard. And having a certain percentage of dedicated lanes was a part of that scoring package.
And if you don't mind me asking, what is that percentage of dedicated lanes and would the project be possible without that percentage?
The percentage that is in this project is ninety percent. That is nine zero percent are dedicated lanes for the Purple Line. In comparison, we had sixty percent, that is six zero, in the red line. The project would have to be rescored if there is not an approval for the dedicated lanes. And the funding that is set aside for this project is in the budget year for distribution this year. As the federal government has a little over five hundred million dollars for distribution where, as in comparison to next year, it's a little over a hundred million. So if we are, if the project is rescored and doesn't score high enough to receive the seventy-seven point five, we would have to go back into the loop and wait for federal funding to come available under a new project scope.
Thank you very much. Inez Evans, the CEO for Indigo. Did I see any additional questions, additional hands? Counselor Brown?
Just have to say, as somebody who lives in a district that has zero, I have zero mass transit stops, meaning I have forty-eight thousand people without access to mass transit. The Purple Line gives us hope. It gives it away so people can get downtown and I know you just turned to Google it and yes, I have zero stops. So, but with that, it can take up to forty-five minutes to get downtown anyway from my district. With these lines, these dedicated lines on Thirty-Eighth Street and the way the traffic is going to flow, it's actually going to simplify traffic. Because if you've ever taken it from Thirty-Eighth Street, from Carroll Road, from the county line in towards downtown, the road is not good on the side, so this will actually make traffic flow faster. People won't be parking in the street. There may be some issues with turns, but I think it's going to be fine. But also, the entire city of Lawrence is supporting this. The councilors, the mayor are supporting the Purple Line because for the first time, we're going to get some access over here. Access to this line and this changing of this button allows us to economically take advantage of this. We have such an amazing population here who has to leave the district. At least this way, they don't have to sit on seventy or sit in traffic. They can get stuff done and get an hour to an hour and a half of their lives back every day. So that's why I'm strongly supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Graves?
To my peers on the council and to our city at large, I want to remind everyone that District thirteen, the Purple Line plays an important role to our community and therefore is very important to me. It will connect the far east side of Indianapolis to the heart of our city. The far east side has long felt disconnected. So there's much more than left turns and right turns. There is a connection that will bond our city from the east to the west. I am very proud of what I've seen from Indigo and their organization, the community engagement, and their careful planning. I am very excited about what will come. Twenty twenty and the challenges that not only Indigo faced, but everyone in our country faced was never the final destination for the Purple Line. This was always a long-term solution. So if we find that we're experiencing some short-term problems, we cannot lose sight of the long-term solution that this Purple Line will provide. So I'm optimistic and I'm looking forward to this moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anay?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to reiterate again that the taxpayers have, have been on the hook upwards of a hundred and seventy million dollars currently. Indigo has raised upwards of forty thousand, a hundred and seventy million to forty thousand. And frankly, I think it's very important that, that Indigo is held to raising that ten percent privately, that they're required to under state law. I would believe it when I see it, but, but I'm not against mass transit and I agree with Counselor Ethan Evans. It's very important Indianapolis' long-term success that we find ways to connect our city in a really meaningful way. But I think it's also extremely important that we, in a thoughtful way, reflect on the red line and reflect on opportunities in the future to make sure that one, we're not bankrupting our city and two, making sure that when Indianapolis gets to the place it wants to be, we didn't sacrifice it because we were too rushed in, in, in wanting to say that we had mass transit. So I think it's important that we get mass transit, but I think it's also important to thoughtful and not rush it. With that, I will yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor Carlino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to share that I'd like to abstain from voting on this measure. My husband's employer is Indigo.
Very good.
Thank you.
Counselor Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to say, well, well said. Counselor Graves, that's precisely everything that needs to be said. But I will also mention too, like the CEO of Indigo had mentioned earlier, that this whole project would have to be rebid if we changed proportions of the design. So that's makes, realigning this whole track a non- So that's makes realigning this whole track a non-starter to begin with. I think the most important thing about this is that the bus rapid transit, the key part of this is the rapid part. And one of the biggest complaints that we have from people in Indianapolis with regard to our transit system is it doesn't meet their knee or their ability to get from one place to another in a timely manner. In 2012, when the Democrats took control of the city council, one of the first things that we did was we took a ride on the city bus just to illustrate exactly how complicated this was to go from one point to another. I know Counselor Barth was there, President Osley was there, several counselors, Counselor Jackson. We started at Forest Manor Community Center and rode a bus to 71st and Allisonville Road or someplace like that. It took us three hours to get there. Three hours. Now, a working mother cannot find three extra hours one way to get to a job. It is absolutely a critical part of the master plan for public transportation in this city to increase the speed at which someone can get from point A to point B. So the dedicated lanes are a critical part of that ability to get from one place to another in a timely manner. So I think to try to condense it down into a smaller area or to make way for more cars, I don't think is a valid conversation to have when so many people's livelihoods depend on their ability to get from point A to point B. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Evans? Jared Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo Counselor Graves' statements. I thought he was spot on about what he said there. If transit isn't your thing, perhaps infrastructure is. And one of the things that continues to get left off about this are the tens of millions, really by the time it's all said and done, probably over $100 million worth of infrastructure investment, sidewalk connectivity, and streets being redone. And I'm just going to be blunt here and say something to my colleagues on the other side. What I expect, since you have such an issue with this, and that's okay to have it, I understand that, but what I expect to see is anger and frustration that the city of Indianapolis continues to get screwed on infrastructure funding. So I hope to see you at the State House next January, February, and March, and April, fighting for Indianapolis to get better infrastructure, since your party's in charge down there on the other side of Market Street. Thank you.
Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo Counselor Graves, and I'm going to echo Counselor Evans. And I'm sorry, VP Addison, I wasn't there in 2012. I was wasting my hand. I didn't get on to 2014. I apologize. But if transit isn't your thing, if infrastructure is your thing, I hope human investment, economic investment is your thing. The problem with Indianapolis is we don't look holistically to tie things together. When we keep leaving out rapid transit and transit period, we're leaving out the economic development piece, and we're leaving ourselves behind as a politic city, believe it or not. Do the research. And that's why we're behind in some of the areas we need to be as far as economic development. Do the math. That's why some businesses won't come here because we don't have that critical piece of the mass transit. Do the math. Do your research. Okay. Number two. Number two is, hey, purple line is the, my district, District 14, has the highest ridership to any other 25 districts, 24 districts in the city of Indianapolis. And it comes right down in my area. Graves and mine, two put together are the two in the city. So I'm going to fight and I'm going to encourage my colleagues to vote for this proposal tonight. If they could have separated the red line from the purple line, the proposal is together. It is what it is. At this point, we need to move to get this going because we have human stake, human lives invested in this. And we need to show and get this effort done for this transportation, for this proposal, because we do need this done for those who ride and whose lives and livelihood depend on this. See, we can get in our cars and we can go. But we're here tonight to fight for and advocate on behalf of those who rely solely on this transportation and not to get to work or to the grocery store in an hour, not to get there in two hours and not get there before there and back. To get there in a timely manner with rapid transportation, we want to, we have our vehicles and we need to get where we're going. And I don't think necessarily it's their fault if they can't afford or don't have the necessary means to have a vehicle and may not want to have a vehicle. That should be our option. So I think as leaders, again, as voices and elected officials of this city, this great city of Indianapolis, mass transit and rapid transit should be a great option for our great citizens and residents and constituents of this city. And in my district, District 14, purple line should be that option, especially Madam Castle Warren and Brown, including the city of Lawrence, where we're connected and having that option now to bring you all in and be representations of that. So for my fair people on the far east side, I stand hold and proud, representing, we're voting for this proposal to pass tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you very much. Counselor Barth? Madam Clerk, if we can.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick comments. One is, I'm one of the people who represents a fair amount of the red line. And I can tell you, the feedback I've gotten from my constituents, especially the constituents who live on College, who are the most affected by the red line, have been positive. And I think Counselor Evans really hit the nail on the head. Infrastructure improvement has been dramatic on a street that was largely ignored for far too long. Plus, the access to rapid transit throughout the city, north and south, has been a benefit. So talking about constituent feedback and constituent support, for me, people I represent, my district who use the red line, has been positive. Now, just another comment on this issue about 38th Street and some desire to have more and more aggressive traffic rather than reducing traffic and making life easier, I'll say this. I have 46,000 cars a day barreling through my district on 38th Street. That is not a good thing. That is a bad thing. That divides neighborhoods in my district. It ruins cohesion. It takes away connectivity for the folks who live in my district. And I'll give you a very specific, very personal example, is the folks I represent and Counselor Oliver represents in the Crown Hill neighborhood have to take their lives in their own hands if they cross 38th Street to go to Tarkington Park. That's not okay. A family should not have to be scared to cross a street where people are barreling through, 46,000 people a day, cars going through and making it dangerous for them to cross the street. Any action that reduces that intensity of use and makes our neighborhoods better and stronger is a good thing. So I am supportive of this, and I will continue and always be supportive of public transit.
Very good. Counselor Mascari?
I'd like to call the question.
All right.
Second.
All right. The question has been called. Just for the record, Madam Counsel, will you make it known what our procedure needs to be with the called question?
Mr. President, a simple majority is required to call the question.
All right. All those in favor of calling the question? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. President? Sorry, this is TK. Mr. President?
I need to go for a roll call vote.
Yes, roll call vote.
Unfortunately. All right. Madam Clerk, we will go for a roll call vote. Please, please begin.
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Ane?
Counselor Ane?
He's on mute.
Counselor Ane? Aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Evans, Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans? Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves? Counselor Graves, yes. Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray, yes. Counselor Hart?
I just want to make sure I'm voting on the right thing. We're voting to move to question to end the debate. And this is not to vote on 142. Is that correct? Okay, yeah. So, aye. Hart, aye.
Counselor Holiday? Holiday, aye. Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, yes. Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones? Jones, aye. Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascari, aye. Aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Aye. Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, I would not want to censor anyone's thoughts on this proposal, so I will be a nay.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts? Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Robinson, aye. Thank you, Mr. President. That is 22 yay, 3 nay.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, so this motion's been properly moved and seconded. We have had comments from counselors. We'll now proceed to roll call for our vote.
Thank you. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, a resounding aye.
Counselor Ane?
Ane, a resounding nay.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, robust, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino abstained.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves? Counselor Graves, aye. Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray, yes. Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Holiday?
Holiday, nay.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, a definite yes. Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascari?
Gary, aye. Go Indigo.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye. McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury that sees Indigo as a part of mass transit already, that does not serve my district.
When I make the speech, it's an aye or a nay?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't allowed to say my piece earlier, but I will go ahead and say nay because I'm being censored now.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts enthusiastically, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Robinson, aye. Mr. President, that is 19 yay, 5 nay, 1 abstention.
Very good. Motion carries.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I have a point of clarification.
Counselor Adamson, please.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that Counselor Maury was not excluded from the debate. He did have a chance to express his feelings at great length, at least one time during this debate and as well as during the committee process. So he was not censored at all. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no business under special service district councils. There is no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The doctored agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
I guess at this point, Mr. President, if I so may, I'd like to offer the following motion for adjournment.
Chair recognizes Counselor Maury. Please continue.
By Counselors Maury, Holiday, Ane, Hart, and Dilk, and Elias, there's Jopos. By Counselor Lewis, Osley, in memory of L. DaVinci Richardson. By Counselor Lewis, in memory of Jackie Troy. By Counselor Barth, in memory of Jim Gerard. By Counselor Ane, in memory of Florence, Lucy Carroll, Thomas, Jay Dan, and Jim Silly. By Counselor Osley, in memory of Pamela, Denny, Rorbock, Alfreda, Garner, Derek Mitchell, and Susan Ward. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of this Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Hearing no objections, and the motion is received and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.